Yeah, I'm just trying to find the go-live part, so I've never done this one before.
So these posts are just like posts on social media where you like tell everybody something?
Yeah.
In teams.
Yeah.
It's in there. Should have a go-live. My video. Trying to find the live. Jeff, do you see a live?
Uh, post the URL.
Yeah. Oh yeah, maybe it's down here. There it is, go-live. Okay, it's not feeding.
Over here. Um, copy your URL.
Yeah, I already did that.
And then post it as a new post. So.
Where are you doing?
Scroll up to the top. To go to home and make a new post on it. Icon, let's see if you can paste in, copy your URL, go home and then paste it as a new post.
Right here?
Copy that back.
We see the live spot. Control C. Maybe it goes right here.
Go live then, yes?
Let's see if we can go-live. Switch match. Let's see if it lets me here. Nope. It's not working for us now. Pass. Oh, wrong, E Street D. The meeting should be live, or it's recording. It's connected.
Is that in the news this cover?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. I said I am. Yep, guess we had it all there.
We did a.
Technically, it is being recorded, so we could start it, we could start and we could try and troubleshoot it. We can get that on Facebook there for it.
All right.
If you do that.
Concern ourselves of those technical difficulties. Once you work on that, we'll just get started here, so call me in order and say the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Everybody here is next, we got a quorum, that's good. And, all right, so the regular agenda, any changes to that, or just a title change?
Only change at thirteen B, it should be approved plans and specs. So just be adjusting that title.
I'd also like to add subsection B to item nine for a discussion on a complaint of adverse impacts from neighboring property.
What was that?
Uh, item nine, subsection B.
Yep.
Discussion on a complaint of adverse impacts from a neighboring property.
Okay, anything else? Okay, if that's the only two, then I'm going to defer a motion to accept the changes. Okay, Naomi makes a motion, can I get a second?
All second.
Sarah does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Consent agenda, any last minute changes on that?
No.
Brent, anybody?
No changes.
You guys have any questions on that?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
All second.
Jeff does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, this council minutes from the last time around, anybody see anything on there that was out of place or that we missed?
No. Motion to approve the minutes.
Chelsea makes a motion, Naomi does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, public comment, anybody got anything you want to talk about tonight? That's not with the taxes.
No, great.
Okay, Bruce, go ahead.
I'm getting a lot of notes, is the council meeting being streamed?
Not yet. It's being recorded, it was out.
Okay. Hi, I'm Caroline, I live at four oh seven Nelson Drive. My address was on the agenda, but Barrett took it off. Um, I came prepared tonight.
Well, you were actually on number nine here as far as the.
Right, is it, I thought, did you take it off, or are we still going to discuss it? I can wait.
We're just taking a discussion.
We are, okay, I can wait, I can wait, we can move on.
Okay.
I'll wait, thanks.
Yep. All right, anybody else got anything? Yep.
Hello, I'm Drew Rutherford, five forty-three Westbrook Drive. I'm happy to see a new composition of the city council, so welcome, and I thank you for your service to the community. Uh, I was happy to see you, and probably a little bit surprised to see you, uh, number eleven on your agenda. But more or less what I wanted to talk about, or at least very briefly, I see that your agenda is quite full, and I don't wish to detain you any longer, but with regards to the forced annexation of the properties in Westbrook Drive and Apple Lane, I really implore the new city council to consider reversing the action that they're moving forward with today, and I hope to see that on a future, um, a future council minutes about undoing the work that was done that way. With greater than ninety-five percent of the properties resisting that, I would hope that the new city council would take that under advisement. Thank you.
Anybody else have thing they want to talk about?
Yep. Hi, my name is Cooper Anderson, I'm with Prairie Scale Systems. Building on the south side in the industrial park right now, on ninety-eight sixty Industrial Drive. I'm just curious as far as what we're doing to fix the road on Industrial Drive. It had to be closed a week and a half ago at our request because four-wheel drive pickups were getting stuck in the roadway. So just curious as far as what is the short term and what is the long-term maintenance plan on that road?
My understanding was that the road was wet, we're trying to wait for it to dry up before we back on there again, because trying to fix it when it was wet was a waste of time. Um, there's enough damage to the road, it's going to take a little bit of work to bring it back, from what I understand, Jim, tell me if I'm wrong here.
You are correct.
So what we're doing is waiting for the road to dry out, and I don't really know where we're at with that, I haven't driven out there in the last couple, three days, so I don't know where we are with that.
I think it was bladed over the weekend to dry out. It was bladed by ourselves and the other two property owners there, and that's partly concerning to me, in visiting with the two property owners there. They say they've once never seen a city vehicle go down that road to do any kind of maintenance. That's what I'm getting for the two property owners that have been there for a long time, so we want to fix the road, we've been grading it three times a day since Friday, since it's been dry, to try and shape it back up, and it's working.
Okay.
It needs maintenance, um, the blade operator showed up at five o'clock Friday, turned in and then did five minutes of grading and left. So we just want to know what the plan is on that road, if we have to fix it, we will, we kept traffic out of there all last week, which sent us back a week in construction, but we didn't want to do more damage to the road than was.
Right, and that's just that we don't want it to get any worse. So I don't know, Jim, any idea, I mean, should we?
Not as far as maintenance wise, it's what the staff's been doing down there, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, well, let's, we can talk with our staff then, and just double check where we're at with the road, I just know at one point they were saying it was too wet, and they didn't want to, it was pointless to do it, so we got a couple of days here where it's dried out. We'll send them back down there and let's take a look, okay? And then you can stay in touch on that.
Sounds good.
How much, just out of curiosity, how much heavy traffic are you anticipating on having on that road with the addition of?
For the construction or for just the operational basis?
Oh, construction, I think I can gauge, because it would be pretty, um, pretty regular, but as far as regular business goes.
Which put me in the twenty-one to seventy is a day out of there.
It's going to beat the living hell out of them.
Well, that's something we'll have to talk about too, to make sure that road's ready to handle, you know, weight like that.
Yep.
It was upgraded a little bit, but I don't know about that, so, but anyway, let's get, the first things first, let's see if we can get the road repaired up, and then we can talk about some of that other.
If there's anything we can do to help, I mean, we'll do it, we just feel a little cautious on taking a grade on the, grader on the city street.
Yep. Okay, well, we'll talk with our staff, we can do, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I just got a note.
You want to get up to the microphone, please?
I was just going to say, I think there's people in the entryway that, so they were having trouble, are the mics on? They're just for online.
Yeah, they're just online, there's no speakers in the building. So, okay. All right, anyone else?
Try to talk louder.
Yeah, anyone else? Okay, Al.
My name's Al, I live at five oh eight Southwood Drive, and I'll be brief, I know everybody else has other things that they want to hear about or talk about. Uh, Wall Avenue, the trucks, as you guys know, are plentiful out there, and they're beating the hell out of the road, and you know that too. And they tend to take two-thirds of the road as opposed to half, many of them do. And so along the shoulders, or along the edges of the road, you got some craters, for lack of a better term, I have a couple of cars that I really like, and I stay the hell off of there as much as I can, and then you get walkers out there, and then it becomes another problem. So those, if you could put some hot mix, cold mix, gravel, something in there at least on an interim basis.
Get those holes, yeah.
Mouches.
It seems to sink too, when they do that, Jim, they put, they fill those holes and then it just sinks.
It, it's, it's getting beaten, I mean, that's why there's weight restrictions on it right now, so enforcing the weight restrictions is going to be important.
We'll look into that a little bit, Al, because the stuff that we put down there seems to get beaten out of those holes, like we put that, some of that at the corner of seventeen and the wall, we filled in that hole, it lasted about a week with our stuff, and it just got hammered out of there, so I'll have to look at something, maybe we're not putting in the right stuff to have some more longevity to it, I think we're going to look into that a little bit more, because you're right, it's sloughing along the road bed there, and there's more holes, so. Yep. I'll talk to the staff about that, see if there's something else we can do to put in there longevity with it. All right.
Yeah, there's a lot of safety concerns.
Yeah. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right. Sheriff's update, I think we're going to pass that one tonight, right?
Yep.
All right. Paul, I guess we got, say you to give a presentation?
Yep. All right, thank you Mayor Peterson, or, yeah, Mayor Peterson, members of the council, presented in front of you today is the twenty twenty-one assessment roll that we're looking to certify for valuations. And all this, all the value that you're seeing is the net values made up throughout the city of Horus, broken down by class property, agricultural, uh, commercial, residential. Twenty twenty was the year that was served for the market, when set in twenty twenty-one values, as everybody knows, uh, interest rates being as low as they were, uh, it really drove quite a spike in, in valuation, or sell price of properties, I should say. Uh, we saw a six percent increase countywide, so then last year, the average selling price of a house was two hundred forty-four thousand, that actually went up to two hundred fifty-nine thousand this year. If you look at Horus, broken out from the county, it's actually three hundred sixteen thousand in Horus, and a lot of that's obviously due to some of the new construction out here, uh, possibly being at a higher rate than some of the other ones, but we're seeing a really healthy market, uh, throughout the city of Horus. Uh, overall, the amount of changes that took place, roughly about two to three percent on existing homes. Last year, the reappraisal was done, so, uh, once, it, it just put us right into a good equitable evaluation of what we're seeing with, with the sales. And I'll let, um, Bob Ayler here, who's with Vanguard Appraisal Inc., he'll get more into detail on that, on where we're at with our sales ratio and where we ended up. But, uh, permit activity, obviously, uh, up at all-time high every year, since we increased a little bit. Uh, one of the good things we saw this year too was increase in commercial permits, just going to bring up that commercial valuation comparison to your, your residential, so the whole burden's not, not on the residential side, so we are seeing some great activity with that. But out of all the residential permits this year, brought in twenty-six million new valuation, and, um, there's obviously some new home exemptions that are on place with that, so we'll be at a higher rate once some of that comes off. And, yeah, I did, I did include some charts and information detailing what I'm talking about today, and I'd like to advise anybody that ever wants to look at any of the property information, just go to our website, or cass.northcotaassessors.com. Uh, you can view your property information, um, you know, if you ever have a question about your property, we like to take those calls, walk them through the property record card, the information we have on hand, just ensure we have everything right and all the details correct. We try to get, when we're doing review of any property, as good data as possible, but, you know, we want to make sure if something, if you're seeing something that's not correct in your data, let us know. The main thing though that we're trying to accomplish today is just more of a formality that we have to hold this meeting, that we're looking to approve values at a certain point in time. These valuations though, honestly, throughout the year, with, uh, things that happen, it, it's kind of a, a moving target as, as things shift, or if there's, um, exemptions that are filed late for new home construction, those values can, can change what we're looking at today. But, uh, once these values, uh, the notices increase were sent out based off those net values I'm presenting today, and there was a thousand sixty-nine that were sent out, so that goes to people that went up by ten percent and three thousand dollars. Now, I would say probably sixty to seventy percent of those were just due to splits of land, or land that was, um, developed last year at a lower rate, now we're bringing it up to that, uh, you know, the, the market rate for some of that vacant land that's out there, so, uh, we didn't, when it was all said and done, we, we had sixteen people contact us, there was actually five today, so there's still a lot that's pending review, um, I mean, we reviewed the work, but we, we still want to work with those individuals one-on-one. That's kind of what you're seeing on, on that list that I set at your table today, uh, those are just the people that, that specifically reached out to us. And we would ask the board to, um, you know, accept the changes that we're recommending in there to the valuations, because those changes were made after I, I presented the formal assessment role. So we're looking to have those adjustments made, but everybody has pending that just reached out to us, uh, let us work with those individuals one-on-one after this meeting between now and the county boards, we can walk them through the process and really just try to help, uh, provide some sales comparison information, or, or discussion on their property on a one-on-one basis, so we can give them a better understanding of, of why, why they have that value that they deal with. But with that said, um, I do have Bob here that, that wants to kind of go over the whole reappraisal process, how their, uh, company handles everything, and just, uh, what took place this year on the commercial side of things. And then after that's done though, uh, we would want to open up for anybody that's here as an individual that would like to appeal, a lot of people might have, uh, concerns that didn't reach out to us ahead of time, we obviously won't be able to dive into any specifics on those properties, but we'd ask that they sign in, I'll leave a sheet up here, just put their name, address, and phone number, so we can be in that, have that communication with them after the meeting. But with that, I'll let, I'll let Bob take it away.
Uh, good evening, my name is Bob Ayler, I'm the president of Vanguard Appraisals. Uh, Vanguard's, uh, we're headquartered out of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, we do work in seven states throughout Midwest. Uh, here in Cass County, I think we've valued about every small town, about every town in the county now, except West Fargo and Fargo. Uh, last year, we did the revaluation of all the residential properties. We did not come up here and do informal hearings, because we had COVID going on at the time. So we did all the hearings, uh, over the phone, I believe, I attended your meeting virtually last year, as I recall. And, uh, the best measure, so when we do a reappraisal project, what, what you're really doing is you're setting up a model to value all the properties in a very consistent manner. So the best measure of a re- revaluation is how close were those values to the sales that occurred afterwards? So we did all this work in the year of two thousand nineteen for the twenty twenty values. So last year, so every time a house sells, the assessor's office takes that sale price, compares it to the assessment, calculates out a ratio. Uh, you take the ratios of all the properties, they get aligned from the smallest to the largest, the one right in the middle is the median ratio, and that ratio by state law has to be between ninety and a hundred percent. If you're over a hundred percent, the state's going to give you an equalization order to lower values, if you're below ninety, you're going to get equalization order to increase values. So in the year of twenty twenty, you had one hundred and thirty homes that sold in the city of Horus, and the median ratio was ninety-six point six-two percent. So that is very encouraging, uh, our, our values were right in line with the sale prices this year, but even more important than that, there's what's called a coefficient of dispersion, which measures the equity, I mean, you could have a good median, but have some, you're way off on this end, way off this end, and you don't, you really don't have consistency. The, the COD measures the consistency. A good COD should be twenty or under, and the COD on the sales this year was four point seven nine. Under national standards, when you have a ratio that high, usually they're going to investigate to see if you cheated, because the, the stats are that good. So the, uh, the, the values have held up very well to the sales this year, which shows that you have good consistency in the, in your assessed values right now, and everybody is being treated fairly and equitably. So then this year, we did the revaluation of the commercial properties, uh, much larger increase there, the overall increase, I believe, was eighty-seven percent. That's quite, now that's new construction, uh, everything up, the biggest part of that increase was in land values. Uh, just, uh, just this afternoon, when I was meeting with property owners, I was reviewing your history of, your land values, especially like along Main Street, they've doubled in the last four or five years. I mean, it's, it's crazy what people are, and we've got land right now valued at eight dollars a square foot that they're asking sixteen dollars for. So even though we increased that land quite a bit, we're still below asking prices. So we, we finished the commercial revaluation this year, notices were mailed out to all the property owners, and this afternoon, I met with any property owner who asked to have an appointment. Uh, that is on the sheet that Paul gave you, so it'd be the bottom half, those would be the people I met with today, there were only four property owners that came in on a total of eight properties. If any of the board members have any questions on any of these, uh, changes that I made today, I would be more than happy to answer those questions. Uh, otherwise, as Paul mentioned earlier, now the top half of this are the changes that Paul's office made to residential properties. Technically, we can't change values, once notices are sent out, only you as the equalization board can do that, so I would ask if there's no questions on any of these changes, that the board make a motion and approve these changes so that they can become effective.
So first I was going to ask if there's anybody in the room here that's got any questions?
Bob, I'd like to meet with you, I didn't, I was on town today, I'm working up in Grant Ford, so I'm going to have a.
Okay, um, Howard, are you within the individual? I was going to say, Paul, how would you want to do that, because I'm sure there's some people in the room here that would like to meet with you.
Yeah, anybody, I left the sign-in sheet right underneath there, I asked that they just, at least come up with an address for a property that they're concerning, and just have them sign in, so you can have a record of everything, and get that conversation on going after, you know, after the meeting.
Okay, so if the board, the equalization board here approves what's going on tonight, and some of these people can have a talk with you, and you guys come up with a change, it would still be valid, right? Or should we?
What we would do after the board tonight is we present any changes, um, at the council, because there's going to be, even after today, there's going to be calls that roll in at different times, not everybody opens them all at the same time.
Yep.
Um, so, yeah, there's always, we'll work with them.
That's, I want to make sure they have a chance to meet with you guys, even outside of this meeting, if we approve this tonight, so that they can have their voices heard with you guys and, and have that conversation.
Yeah, i- if you approve these changes, if I speak with any other commercial property owners, I'll get those changes to Paul, and then he can get them approved at the county level.
So then what I would say to anybody in the room here that wants to have a conversation with these guys, you've got the sheet up there, let's make sure that you guys get signed in and everybody, so they can get ahold of you, contact you, and set up a time. AJ?
Yeah, so you're saying that you have the, whatever decision you have is fine.
No, no. So the, all right, there are some people that, um, I met with today.
Right.
That may not be happy with the decision I made.
So we'll call them pending?
Call them pending, well, then.
That you guys, yeah, and you'll come?
I'm not quite sure you want them to talk to the county, that, that's actually the next level of appeals. Is if, if the board approves this, then the next level of appeal is in June at the county level.
Okay. So, we just want to make sure we have the lines of communication open with you guys, so that they can make.
I just want to make sure that, that when you finalize this, that we're not, that's like, it's over for us, we're just, I mean, it's lost management. Yeah, I just want to make sure that when you finalize this, that we're not, that's like it's over for us, we're just, I mean, it's lost management.
Mm-hmm. Right, so that's what I mean, we'll have that, you'll go up to the, you're saying they'll have a conversation with the county then at that, at their next meeting? Or you guys will have a continuation?
The typical appeal process is in April, you, at the city or township level, then June at the county level. And then you can go all the way to August at the state level.
So yeah, we'll be sending a notice to everybody that's currently on the list or that adds their names to the list today after we've contacted them, let them know where that final value lies at.
Sure.
And then advise them if they wish to pursue any further, to the county board.
Council members, you guys have any questions here for Bob or Paul?
I don't have any questions, but it sounds like we're gonna, if somebody wants to speak, they can.
I mean, if they want to, yeah. If anybody's going to talk or have a conversation. Need you go ahead.
Yeah, why don't we, I just.
Go ahead, you want to come up here?
Yeah.
I would just like to know, when is this going to stop? I mean, realistically, I know we got to pay taxes, you know, but, you know, somewhere, what, ninety-seven percent? You know, we've already just met with them two years ago. That's just two, three, two, two and a half years ago on commercial. Now it's going, now we're getting hit with it again. When is this going to stop? There's a point that the property's only worth so much. If it wasn't for those schools here, we probably wouldn't be talking about this either, you know? And I know they raise a lot of value, I understand that, you know? But like I said, this is not a big community here, you know, Horus. We have to pass that on, and we know we have tenants, we have to pass that on to the tenants. We're going to be driving them out here pretty soon, because we already went through this already two years ago. And we got to come back to them again and tell them we're going to raise their rent, camp, whatever you want to call it, same thing. To the point that if I were doing business here, I'd rather go back up north where there's tenfold the people up there. I'd be more successful. Why would I want to put business here in Horus if I'm going to break an even here because my landlord keeps raising rent on me? There's got to be a point where it's only worth so much. I know what the, I know what you're talking about, Horus, you know, what the market will go, I understand that. But it'll, it'll take so much. It can only take so much and worth so much. And ten years from now, then depreciate it out, and all of a sudden, it's not worth one point five anymore. It's probably worth a million dollars now. So I could see this going up, but I don't see it coming down. You know, so I don't understand where, I don't have the problem, you know, paying taxes. But when you jump double, half a million dollars in one lot, tell you what, you know, somebody missed the boat or someone, we got, we got an issue going on. Now, we have to sit there and take that to the tenants. That's not going to be easy, you know, so we may risk losing one tenant perhaps. And we may not even build the next lot that we have either, because we don't know what that's going to be at either. We know how much it's going to cost to put it up, but by the time you guys get done with it, who knows what it's going to be worth again, you know, or what you think it's worth. And like I mentioned before, if it's worth that kind of money, by all means, buy it. Buy it all. I said it before and I'll say it again right now, buy it all. I have no problem with that either if it's worth that kind of money, you know? So there has to be some kind of a plateau someplace, you know, where there, we're not trying to get that plateau tomorrow. Might take five, ten years, and at least it's a slow climb. So if it's worth one point five and ten years from now, at that time, you know, you're sitting there, not now. Ten years from now, depreciation, building starts dropping in value based on, you know, new maintenance and upkeep on that. So that comes from us, not from anybody else. So that's that's my point right there, because there's a point where you got to.
So Al, did they, I mean, a couple of years ago, you guys went through an evaluation up there as well, right? I mean, that's just making sure we understand that.
Yes, we did.
So was it just their properties that, do you remember, Paul? I mean, was it just there that you guys did?
Yeah, commercial development at that time, we were just looking at some of the land.
Okay.
At that time, even just trying to get a little closer market and, yeah, we just review, I think, all of all of your properties up there.
There's not a whole lot of commercial beginning, so basically.
Right, yeah, pretty much.
This is round, this is round three, actually. Stop considering the fact that you finished up.
No, like I said, you know, then, you know, three years from now, again, here we go again.
I don't, I don't disagree with this, and I'm going to jump in, and feel free others to do so. But I went through this exact same thing, Paul, you know me by name, right? You've been out to my house, you've seen it. We had a situation where taxes were not equalized out, right? We understood that, we knew some changes hadn't been made for many years, we were way behind. Okay, I can take first hit. I can maybe swallow second hit, but I'm kind of feeling the same way you are. I'm having a tough time swallowing the third hit.
Right.
And I don't think I can sell my home for the values that are being established. And so I need to understand that process a little more. I think we need to dig into that a little more. Because this is a hot commodity out here, don't get me wrong. Horus, we understand. And the methodation, the methodology, I guess, because methodation isn't a word, that you mentioned, actually makes a lot of sense to me. You're going off of other values, you're going off of how hot the market is right now, the fact that all of our interest rates are so low, and I get that. But at what point do we hit a cap? And I really do feel that, because my taxes have gone up ridiculously. I mean, I took a four thousand dollar hit in one year, let alone where we've gone for the next several years. And it just, I feel like there's no need in sight. And so maybe you can help explain that to us about what determines that end? At what point are we pricing people out of our local market?
There's nice to know if there's an end cap someplace, you know, if they look at your value, the building, your building might be one point, one point five million in its prime.
I don't want to belabor the meeting, but I want to understand how we in this small community can keep getting hit and hit and hit and hit and and understanding that we're willing to pay our fair share, don't get me wrong, right? But it feels like over the last couple of years, it's just been.
Well, that's the thing, it's been only, it's only been a couple of years, and we're hitting again. So I mean, it's not so much like we're coming home twice, because we gotta go up to our tenants and let them know that.
Were we that far behind? I I mean.
Are we referring to the commercial side now, or the residential, or does that say it's a whole?
In general.
In general.
Yeah, and do you want to go up any?
Please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Help us understand, because I.
Well, I'll be able to help understand in one meeting, but I think it is definitely a good discussion. And maybe I just even meet with all the board one-on-one at some point and just kind of show you what we're working with on the backend and what we're studying and how we're getting to the values that we're at. They could be pretty eye-opening for everybody once you like look into how we're, we're looking at things.
I appreciate that, because we're getting asked a lot of questions.
Yeah, no, it is.
And there are some things that are within the city's control, there are some things that are not.
Yep.
But we're being asked to approve values, and I need to understand why.
And I think if we look historically, I mean, just as everybody kind of understands, yeah, that market is appreciating, it's been going up and up and up. But we, by legislate, or by state century code, we have to be within that tolerance level of whatever the market's supporting. So as that increases, I mean, we need to fall within those categories that Bob mentioned, that ninety to a hundred percent where our median is.
Yeah.
And there's certain statistical categories too that we're measured by to make sure that it's done correctly. Now, will there be a stop? I like, I don't know. I mean, you would imagine as the interest rates kind of go back up and with the costs of construction, lumber right now where it is, maybe as interest rates go back up, it'll slip a little bit. But we're not seeing that right now. And I, you know, maybe just a personal example of like my own house and just what I saw over the course of time. We built our house in two thousand twelve. It's just a Thompson, single-family house that you probably have a couple hundred of them over on Fifth and Sixth Street there. So built it for one sixty-one and then sold it just last year. And, you know, those houses are built, finished up, finished down. Only thing we added was a deck, and sold it for two hundred forty thousand. So, I mean, if we're not constantly keeping up with those changes that the market's giving us, we're going to be way out of tolerance, which is what happened here. So now we've brought up to the market level, and that's why we only saw roughly that two to three percent change in residential side this year. We were behind on the commercial and I was lagging because that was, it was a twofold process. We got to get the residential done, which we did, and most people on their tax statements or on their notice of increase, you can see, yeah, you didn't have much of an adjustment. Now, there's still obviously some that did increase over that two to three percent, but most were in that range. Now, on the commercial side, we brought that up to its market level.
So the commercial side actually was still lagging at that. Revaluation process wasn't done last year.
So exactly, exactly, yep. The residential one that was accomplished last year, the commercial was still a work in progress. And just so we didn't fall further behind on the residential side, we went live with everything that year and then brought in commercial this year to finalize that development. And that was all part of when we originally contracted everything, they actually had till two thousand twenty-two, I think, for us to complete everything. So they're ahead of schedule actually, but it was just a product of how everything, with the timing of how everything was completed. So now that that commercial is brought up, I'm hoping we'll see a similar trend what we saw on the residential side. Where we're just seeing, you know, if we see a six percent in the market, we might need to adjust those. Or if we see metal buildings increasing in cost or or anything like that, we'll, we'll adjust our tables and our depreciation appropriately to value according to what the market's telling us.
What happens, this is just a general question, some people that might be watching or are sitting here. What happens if we fall outside of that trend, if you will? Say that we're at that ninety to a hundred percent, ninety-six to a hundred and two percent, whatever, whatever that ratio is, whatever that category is.
So what's really interesting with that is, so Horus isn't the size of a, to have its own sales ratio. So even though your, your own city, you fall into the ratio of the whole county, because it's all studied together. Now, what would happen is if the counties, which is really similar, we're right about the same percent with the numbers I ran. If we were out, everybody in the county except West Fargo and Fargo, because they are at the appropriate levels by state standards to run their own sales ratio, everybody outside of that would be moved up to whatever median level that the state determines. So then they'd just paint a brush across, and they would create more inequities, as you can imagine, because then it's just, everybody gets hit. So what we try to do is cities like Horus, Mapleton, and Cassin, where we have really healthy markets and we're getting a lot of sales, even though it's separate, or even though it's included in the Cass overall sales ratio, we do identify each city on its own level, because we just have that great wealth of sales information in those markets. And the criteria, if you were a city, and once you hit five thousand, I think, I can't remember if it's five thousand people or five thousand parcels, you can start developing your own sales ratio and be separate from from the counties overall. And you guys will obviously hit that, probably within, you know, five to ten years, I would imagine, probably even quicker.
One of the reasons why I'm asking, because we're experiencing an unprecedented amount of growth here. And things are coming, and we're trying to keep our thumb on all of this.
Yep.
You know, take a breath, not go so fast that we're outgrowing our own population. And I'm struggling with how to handle that as a new council member. I wasn't on the council last year, and I think there's a few others of us that are trying to learn how we can do this fairly so that we are not impacting residents so severely. And I understand an equalization, I understand a revaluation once, maybe twice. But we're, this seems to be just, it just keeps going, and our community is just, the valuations aren't going so high. I mean, I I can't think of a time that we're going to find homes that are coming in here that are going to be at that hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Yeah, you, it feels like there'd be a cap at some point. I thought there'd be a cap on my house, but that, what what I had for that house, I said, when I was forty, that just ended up being the starter market. Now to get in a starter home, you're paying that two forty.
That's exactly it. Our starter market here seems so much higher.
Until the, until the resales of those properties start to deflate for whatever reason, or we see it in the market, we still are going to have to track with what that, those market increases are going. And we're already seeing startup, first quarter of two thousand twenty-one, so this would be the sales ratio study for next year's values.
Yeah.
It's, it's still going up. Now, will that change as the year goes on? Will we see something drastic happen that might offset that? Absolutely, I don't know. That's why we study the whole year as a whole, and we don't just say, you know, a specific point in time. We study what happened throughout that whole year.
Paul, I think it would probably be smart, maybe, you know, we plan a time here, maybe in the next month or so.
No, absolutely.
With the council, maybe go over this exercise, so that, especially the new members, and for all of us for that matter, just get us up to speed on this a little bit more, so we can see, you know, is there something that we can do to try and minimize these impacts? Because the commercial one, that's a hell of a bump.
That's.
You know, again, and so it's like, what are we going to, is there something that we can do council-wise or just, you know,
some type of direction that we can help, I'll call it minimize at best with this, so we don't have these power hits? I don't know if there's anything that we can do, but I think we should discuss.
If developers would start selling for less, that's the only thing I can think of, if you can't control that, but no.
But let's have that talk, so we can at least understand the methodologies, so that we can grasp all that and maybe come up with something.
No, absolutely.
At least start that conversation.
Yeah.
Because that's a pretty good hit we've had in a couple of years. And I I get where it's coming from on that. So.
Yeah, but no, I'd be more than happy at, like, after this week of meetings, I have like five more boards. I'll be wide open to sit down with you guys and just, you know, bring everything I got and show you exactly what we're doing and why we're at where we're at.
Yes, that that would help us a lot to make sure that, A, we can be a part of the forecasting process as this continues.
Yeah.
And B, give our residents what to expect.
Right.
Because those types of hits, people can't just afford.
That's what I'm thinking, you know, at least we'd have, ahead of time, we'd know, you know, what the trend lines are doing, and we'd have better understanding and can get that information out.
Sure. Yeah, unfortunately, with with the mass reappraisal we handled this year, it's not always known until, you know, it's completed. But absolutely going forward, we'll have those, I'll, I'll be able to give you, you know, forecast a lot, a lot earlier prior to the meeting, exactly where we're going to be at, what we're seeing in trends.
And if we can see the trends, I mean, that's usually how you start forecasting, you know, some where we're going with things. And if we can get some trend analysis, you know, that'll help.
No, these are, these are great questions, and I appreciate them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
And, you know, just to note too, I mean, the goal here is to avoid this type of situation from happening. So that's why I think, just trying to wrap our head around why there's, like Al's talking about continued jumps. You know, that's what we're trying to avoid. Sarah's talking about her valuation going up. I had, my appraisal doubled with the residential, and it was obviously way undervalued. And I had, we had a discussion, brought it down a little, and when I saw a house nearby me sell for a shocking amount, it it kind of opened my eyes to my house. And I, you know, so, just so people understand, like, the goal here is to avoid this problem. So I, you know, we need to wrap our heads around why these jumps are still happening, or what to expect with bigger jumps in the future.
And that's fair, but I I don't think anybody really expected, I don't think anybody really understands how undervalued we truly were until just the last couple of years, because I know it was a huge shock to me, and I like to consider myself a pretty informed individual.
I, because I don't understand how it got so far these days in the first place. Like, how is that?
It's not just even a Horus thing, it was just county-wide. It it kind of, it it goes back to how everything was handled statewide in education standards that were put forth. Everybody was allowed to have local assessors that it it just possibly didn't have the same criteria that we're going through today for education standards. And what we do on a continual basis to make sure we're up and know on any, anything assessment related. So it, it's not even just our county, it's, this was a statewide issue that was identified. And that's why we brought up legislatively to, you know, really dive into this, create these digital records, have everything reappraised and continue to reappraise. They want us to hopefully, you know, be going door-to-door every five years and keep our records as up to date as possible.
Because I think part of this, what, at least what we understood when this got brought up, like, three, four years ago, was that, you know, we had a part-time assessor working in the city here for many years. I don't remember how long he worked. But then, you know, four or five years ago is when we started having the growth going on, and we weren't able to keep up. At least with the part-time assessment, wasn't able to keep up. And I wasn't really aware, you know, how much we needed to do, but we didn't keep up with it. And so this probably had been going on for, I don't even know, prior to when you guys came on, when the last time was they did like a citywide evaluate, because it was just spot hit and miss type stuff up to that point. But the state changed the rules in what, two thousand seventeen, where they kind of wanted the county to start?
Yeah, it was around, it was about that year, I think in fifteen or seventeen.
Because it was left up to the cities to do it up until that point, and I think the state got grumpy about that and said, okay, county.
I think it was seventeen, because yeah, most people, they could hold on to their license.
Right, and I think that's when you guys, we started talking about this, and that's when we decided we better do this or get where we're supposed to be, because we were too far behind, obviously.
And I shouldn't say like what I did with the locals, we had some great local assessors out there too, but it's just, it was hard. We have a camera software that we use that we can calibrate and handle this massive data on an ongoing basis through our computer system. And that, I think that's what's lacking, we're simply just having paper.
It was, yep.
And when you have that growth expectation. Um, when you have that role, expectations like this, to calibrate everything and make sure you're keeping up with those changes in the market, it's hard. But we have all the tools to look at every aspect of any, of any building material that goes through that house on a yearly basis. Adjust accordingly.
And I think one of the things too, I was gonna mention, uh, we had talked about this, you know, we had a lot of property cards in here that we updated. If I remember correctly, I think everything's updated now in your system.
That's correct.
You know, but what I've, I've told people to do is if you think your valuations were wrong, check your property card. Cause that's sometimes, if nobody was home, that's part of what they had to go off of. Sometimes there was some mis, misinformation on those property cards too.
Yeah.
So it's just behoove everybody to go and look and review those cards, um, if you thought your valuations were off. Because that, that might be why, that there's something on there that you actually don't have on your house, or it's not part of your house, but it was listed on the property card. And that's what you guys have to go off of if you're not allowed on the property, so.
I appreciate that, that's exactly what we'd ask everybody, thank you.
Yep.
Now, now that everything has been reappraised in the county, not only did we set values. But we put, as Paul said, they use a computer system, well, basically what we were doing is getting all the information into that computer system integral. So it's fundamentally changed how your assessments are gonna be done in the future. Uh, they're gonna be able to much closer monitor what's happening to the market and adjust to it. So the, this, these large changes you've been seeing, if your market is slowly going up. You're gonna see, see slow increases, but you should not see these jumps you've seen the last few years. I, I, I started doing work in North Dakota about twenty years ago. The assessment process in the, the entire state of North Dakota was very poor. Especially on commercial properties, cause you have somebody who's a part-time assessor. And you get, somebody builds a strip ball or something like that, not pick on anybody, but. They really have no idea how to value, they're not, they're part-time. So they, they would put a value on it, that that value would never change. Commercial, residential, you had a lot more sales, so they would track those sales and could increase values as the sales increased. But you might have one commercial property that sells. So they tend to, they just left it. So you'd go over a twenty-year period, we, we would go into counties and we'd see the residential just kept going up year after year. Commercial was the same value it was twenty years ago. So that avows is just getting bigger and bigger, and then that's what happens when you do a revaluation, you're playing catch-up. Twenty years of stagnation to get it up to market.
Can I ask a question about in that regard? Corey, you've nev, you've never seen me up here complain about this before, you guys know who I am, Jim and Lucas and. Bob, I have no problem being a good neighbor. I own a Horace self-storage in town here, and I offer a service to everyone that uh, needs to put their things. While they're building a new house, or possibly uh, long-term, and I have quite a few people that have been there long-term. And uh, I can't increase my rates, I don't understand, Paul, when you talk about commercial or residential. In that three to six percent, or whatever that might be. Uh, Bob, you make the reference, um, that we've fallen behind on the, on the commercial side of things, or we weren't looking at it realistic value. That's only good if you wanna sell. I've got a four oh one case sitting over there, and my hands are dirty, cause I work all the time. I left the house at six thirty this morning, I was working up in Grand Forks. When I got this tax statement, I got an increase of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. It's a twenty-seven percent increase on that property. I have no snow removal, I have no water, I have no sewer, I have no garbage pickup, I have no electricity. I even mow the county ditch. I don't understand it. I can't raise my rents to my customers, our residents, our neighbors, our friends. To meet these kinds of goals, I understand. If you're gonna build an industrial park and invite new business, great. You got competition in town with new storage units, that's fine, I don't mind competition, as long as it's fair. But I'm really frustrated, because I've been there for years and years and years, and now we're gonna make Main Street right across from my property. And that's why it's worth more, I'm frustrated. I can't match these kinds of rents to the amount of bills that I have as an obligation as a business owner, as a commercial landowner. I, I'm paying a lot of money to have point nine to uh, not quite an acre of land in Cass County with no amenities. I have no services, zero. So I'm paying a lot of money just to have uh, land in Cass County. And a lot of people, what no one has ever talked about even tonight is. People are moving to Horace because they wanna be out of the hustle and bustle of the big city, no one has even mentioned that tonight yet. Yeah, we have to be fair, we have to have equalization, but Horace still isn't West Fargo or Fargo. People love living out here, we like to see turkeys come off the river from time to time, and maybe a deer in your backyard. We, we all do it.
Yes, we love it.
Don't lose track of the fact that we're still Horace, North Dakota, we're still a small city on the road, and we're going through all these growing pains. But as a commercial owner, and as your neighbor, I'm frustrated with this round three of this. I, you know, I didn't, I didn't wanna come back, just wanted to watch it happen, kinda just took my lumps like everybody else did. And now, is there gonna be another bike trail, is there gonna be more specials because of the schools? Is there gonna be, you know, there's all these unknowns on top of all this, on top of this, you know, where's it gonna end, like AJ said, I'm right across from AJ.
There will be another bike trail, but it is funded by the grounds.
Where is that going?
When?
Where?
Uh, it'll be a continuation of what we just put in.
On what side of the ground?
It will be on the west side, and then we're planning to jump sides after the roundabout.
So Alan, south side of the roundabout?
Uh, yep, this one will be on the west side of seventeen, so about continuation of the one we just put in.
East side north of the roundabout.
Yep. Yeah, and then once you get to the roundabout, it'll switch sides.
And is that going all the way up to sixty-four?
I don't know, it's not, I thought we hadn't gotten quite that far yet.
It's in the plan, that part.
We're only funding the seventy-sixth right now.
Got it.
The rest of it's just in planning.
Yep.
Okay. Right, and you've talked to these guys, so you're on, alright.
Are, are there any other commercial property owners that I did not speak with earlier today that didn't wanna meet with me? Is, is a room next door available, is there anyone else?
Yeah, yeah, the room next door is available.
I thought this was about.
I, I, we could go over there and I could have one-on-one discussion with them on those, their property right now.
Great.
We could always add it to the list to fund any change.
Thank you. I certainly will, I certainly will. Yes, sir, you did.
Is there anyone else that needs to add their name to this?
Bob, go ahead and announce that out in the hallway there, in case people didn't hear what you said, okay, just, everybody's in. So Paul, you want us to do the same thing, if anybody's got any residential questions, put it on that list as well. So if anybody's got anything, if they wanna talk to Paul about their residential uh, valuations that they got, go ahead and put it down on a sheet. And he'll get in contact with you. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions on the taxes, this thing's out?
I have one quick question, Corey, when, uh, when is the next bike? You know, we already said that the, this was the big one, so how, I know the whole county or city has to be redone every ten years, the whole city, correct? There's a third, and a third, and a third, is that where?
Is it every?
We'll, we'll actually.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get, to keep consistent, we'll try to get through about every five.
Yeah, five, I think is what, you're shooting for elves, what they're trying to do is every five years.
We really don't wanna extend it much past that, but it will do the whole city once.
So we're looking at a yearly tax increase, about re-tax increase, or revaluation?
Uh, yeah, so your valuations are looked at on a yearly basis and adjusted according to market conditions. With some, you know, they're all adjusted different rates based on the year built and the condition of that home, and you know, the sales review that goes on a yearly basis too. So every house does get reviewed on a yearly basis, but on an individual level, we would go out and we're, you know, remeasuring, making sure that's right. Trying to get some interior data, that's every five, six years.
Did you catch that, Al?
Yeah, I don't know where yet.
The goal is to look at it yearly, rather than having these big jumps where everybody is, wants to rip their hair out.
And generally, what we've seen is through the reappraisal process handling it, just waiting, ripping that band-aid off to first year stocks. It's just crazy what we've seen, not in just this community, but everywhere that we handle, but then it's get back the second time. You generally don't see that same shift, cause we've been keeping up with the market, and we have the information, unless there's massive adjustments that property that we.
So the problem running into is we got market pressure that just keeps driving up the damn prices, that's what's going on.
Exactly, yeah, and building costs are driving up the market, and people are still buying at this higher rate. Like, they think everybody's read the news, knows new construction of the same house we bought last year, I mean.
And that's what keeps pushing things up as we go here.
Forty-five dollar sheet of plywood's over a hundred dollars right now, and people are still buying.
Yep.
I wrote, uh, our three legislators, uh, district twenty-two, uh, this week about uh, property taxes. And Brandy Pyle was one of them who specifically spoke to that issue, and one of the things that she said was that uh, the twenty, that there. That the money given back to the cities was supposed to, at counties and school districts, was supposed to result in a, in a reduction in property taxes. Well, clearly that has not happened, and I realize that the city's grown, and I appreciate the fine work that Adam and the crew do to, to keep things going. But this is getting nuts, and somewhere along the line, like uh, this gentleman back here said, that you gotta stop it. Because it is gonna force people out, and I'm probably gonna be one of them. What's more, the homestead credit uh, isn't worth anything, it's a joke. And then again, I talked to all three of our legislators about that as well, along with a bunch of other things. And uh, I don't know, I've told you before, I've already expressed what I felt, and I'm just, I guess re-underlining that and telling you, I'm talking to the legislature. But they aren't paying any attention either. And it's gotta stop.
What do we have to do collectively, Al, you're, you're a great resource, so.
No, I'm not.
We're listening, you're, you're communicating with these legislators, you're not getting a response from them.
Well, they're so worried about gun legislation, that's the only thing that they care about right now, and keeping transgender athletes out. I mean, they're not paying any attention to pocketbook issues, and that's the problem. They're drunk with power, and, cause they have a super majority, so they really don't too much give a good goddamn about the rest of us, that's my opinion.
So, okay, I'm, with the valuations here and stuff like that, so if anybody wants to still get ahold of you, they can get on here, or.
Yeah, they can sign on the list, or even if they just, uh, you know, call it, like I said, we work with anybody anytime, every year. We're always gonna review our properties, cause questions come up with time. But yeah, like, like I said at the beginning, today is more of an alley, where we're just looking at, what is it today? Um, and we're looking to, you know, approve those changes, and then approve the assessment roll with those changes. And that would be where we're at today, but as calls come in, there's changes, um, that, that target might change, and those values might change a little bit. But as of today, that's what we're just looking to accomplish.
Excellent.
Okay.
So, Corey, Paul, what I have on the screen there, the different motions that you sent me.
Uh, in order for, for this meeting, we need to have those motions enacted or reconsidered.
Concerns that we have, so we'd wanna, yeah, accept the changes to the assessment rolls that were presented there. Um, good list, and those people are pending, and actually, anybody on that list is still pending, because they've already contacted us.
Yeah.
So it can still go forward at the county level. Um, so we'd like to then, uh, move the bills into a pending status, and then basically what we're doing is sort of find all the values.
Plus, I wanna make sure everybody who wants to be on the pending status gets logged in here tonight, so they're on paper. You wanna make a comment?
Yeah, I just, a couple of comments, first of all, I'm Sheri Moore, I'm owner-operator Walt's Tree Service, out of West Fargo. Because that's where my dad originated the business. My dad retired in May of last year, turned eighty, and I bought the business, and I'm now owner-operator. I have been trying to contact people in the city of Horace to get some land to put up my own shop, so that I don't have to give all my revenue to West Fargo. But apparently, I've been told that I'm gonna have to jump through all these hoops, I'm gonna go through all of these reassessments. I'm gonna probably end up with extra taxes, assessments, and specials because of everything else going on in town, so I'm staying in West Fargo. That's my choice, so, the other thing I wanted to express, and I did at the last meeting I was at, is when the reevaluations are done. I hope you're actually looking at how much land is left, because I have lost fifteen hundred feet of riverbank, twelve feet deep into my yard. I'm still paying taxes on it, but it's floating in the water somewhere. So again, fairness of assessments is appreciated, but yeah, um, I'm being told left and right not to buy property in Horace for commercial. So it's coming right from the city people.
Okay. Alright, anybody else got anything they wanna talk about with the tax equalization tonight? Okay, alright, so you guys have any questions or comments that you wanna put out of them, what we've already talked about?
I'm concerned about that. Yeah, I'm, we'll talk about that later, but um, I want it on record that I'm very concerned about that feedback. Um, and need to address that.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yep. Alright.
If we're making that motion, this is just to accept these numbers.
Mm-hmm. Cause these are, these are considered pending, the ones that you've got on the sheet here right now, the rest of them have all, um, what's appraised. This is the pending, the other ones have been gone through the process, and this would be the formalization.
But yeah, most people still might.
Before we do that, just make sure there's no way in the hallway.
AJ, is everybody out there that needs to sign on here, just, can you just ask for me? You're good, alright, thank you.
So if we agree, then that means they have to go to an F D L, is that what it's?
Oh, this is already starting there.
Oh, okay.
Buy, buy those names on there, absolutely. So we, yeah, we just ask that, they just go to pending status, and then that will obviously work with them, you can now be on the board, and we can see how it goes, or anything.
Okay. Alright. So any other questions, comments?
Is there anybody else besides these two, just wanna make sure?
So when the residential, if you got questions, it should be up on there too?
Sign on that right now.
Any residential, commercial, sign in. So Paul can get back to you.
Thanks, guys.
Any questions?
Not right now.
Yeah. Alright, so. I don't have them all on my sheet here in front of me, so. So let's first, Brett, read them off to me.
Okay, Paul, do you want these all in one or separate?
Uh, you know.
Is it better to do separate?
Uh, if you could do it in one motion, that would make sense, I'd be fine.
You mean on the initial?
Can, can motion just be made to, the recommended motions?
Yeah, so I, I would just read them off here, so being, we'll combine them all into one motion. The recommend motion would be to accept changes to the assessed roll call. Uh, this list of changes would be presented to council, which you already saw, so accept, accept changes to the assessment roll. Move all appeals at meeting into pending review status, so if anybody has appealed, written their name and address on that sheet of paper. Uh, they're considered in pending review status, and another part is approve all non-pending values in the twenty twenty-one assessment roll. So if nobody appealed it, then you have that included in the assessment roll, right, approved, so. I'll, I'll recap really quick, so you have accept changes to assessment roll, move all appeals at meeting to pending review status. And approve all non-pending values in the twenty twenty-one assessment roll.
I'll make that motion, as long as everyone's voice has been heard, and everyone's gotten on their sheet, has an opportunity to visit with the county.
Okay, Sarah's made the motion, uh, if anybody else needs to sign that paper, go ahead and do it tonight, um, can I get a second?
Nobody wants to say? Nobody wants to second?
If you disagree with it, that's fine. But then make the case.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with it because we rely on the professionals. We're not, we don't have the skill set to put these valuations on there. So, you know, there's been a lot of conversations. We, you know, we wanna talk about the jumps, but everybody said their opportunity to put their name on there, so I'll second it.
Okay. Brandon, do you want us to roll call, let's vote?
I don't believe it has.
Yes, I would. It sounds like there's not a questionable decision from council level.
All right, so Sarah made the motion, Chelsea does second, so we're gonna roll call. Sarah?
Yes.
Naomi?
Yes.
Chelsea? Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. All right.
I'll just, I'll just give you a minute. You just start up signing and then we can just get it on the mail back to me as soon as I can.
Yeah, we can do that.
So I can set contact and everybody, just in case somebody else...
Yeah, and then we'll set up a time here like within the next month and let's go through that process.
That'd be awesome. We'd really like to do that, so.
Yeah, and I think it'll be good education for all of us, basically, so we understand this trend lines here that we're dealing with and what's going on.
I appreciate you guys taking the time here, everybody's concerned, and we got a very long meeting today and I just made it a lot longer, so...
No, it's good to get the information out, that's what we wanted to do tonight.
No, absolutely.
So appreciate that.
Thank you and thanks very much.
All right. So really quick, just so councils, where we did get Facebook working, so that is live. It's been live for about twenty minutes or so here now. But just wanted to give you a heads up that it's working. Found out we had too many computers connected to the network, so.
All right, sounds good. Okay, Barrett, you got the next one.
Thank you, Mayor. So what you have before you is an item that was tabled at the last city council meeting on April 5th. This was the request for the nuisance abatement at 407 Nelson Drive. Staff took direction from the council. We did meet with the property owner to discuss the property and identify the items that were in violation of the city ordinance. We had really great cooperation from the property owner and had a lot of those items picked up. However, when I visited the site today, I did find further violation of that ordinance. And I just wanted to bring it before the council today to get your feedback, whether you'd like to press forward, maybe set a deadline, or just dismiss it altogether. And then if you do decide to dismiss it, please provide staff with comments so that we can take note of that as we progress in future code enforcement activities. I don't know if it's possible to bring it up. Yeah, it's up to Bobby.
Which one is it, Barrett? There's two of them on here. The picture you wanna talk about?
It's the picture you see on the screen before you. Just some items that I know that were on the lawn.
That one is a burn pile, we're on a burn ban. I can't burn that right now, per the county, or otherwise that pile would not be there. So that has to be here until we can, are able to burn.
Where'd you take that picture from?
The bar.
Standing on a bar, so the one thing you guys gotta look at is he is now three to four feet higher than a six-foot fence. So I'll even say it's a nuisance because if you're actually at ground level with the property there, you couldn't even see that.
Would you like me to address those comments, Mayor, or...
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
You were out, I haven't been over there and looked, so that's why I'm...
I guess the first comment, I didn't know the context of the items on the lawn. I just took a picture of what I saw. In terms of the vantage point, it was in the Big Erbs parking lot where the, it kinda looks like the parking stall does incline. I stood in that position, took the photo, so that was the vantage point I had from that location.
I have pictures of a person that's five foot five, standing on that concrete. You see my privacy, keyword, privacy fence. You can see about three and a half feet of her that can see in my yard. Here's my pictures of my backyard. And yes, there is a burn pile back there, but also here's me sitting on my swing. How can I enjoy my backyard with everybody staring at it? Furthermore, as I was cleaning up, a gentleman proceeded to stare in my yard. And my mother was there and asked him what the hell he was looking at, if he got a good look, just so you know. You also talked about mowers, equipment. Please, I go around town, there's plenty for you guys to look at here. So if I'm in violation, every one of those pictures are in violation. And let's do a complaint. How about we go on to what's happening and write, "To every citizen of Horace, you cannot have a push mower in your yard, even if it's in your backyard. You cannot have a riding lawnmower in your yard or your backyard or next to your garage, anywhere in your yard. It has to be enclosed. You're being unfair, totally unfair." And as far as junk, I got plenty of those, plenty of those. You can surely look at those too. I spent over an hour driving this town just to make sure I wasn't the only one that has few things in my yard. So I did ask you guys, Barrett called me and told me I cannot adjust my fence. Okay, well, let's go over here to the blind corner, everybody knows. His fence, he put slats in it, what, five years ago? Okay, here's the slats. You can see right through them. Hence, privacy, he got slats, you can still see through them. So I also measured his fence. Here's the tape measure, right here, going to the ground. This one is at almost eight feet. His poles are way up high, so his fence comes up. Yeah, so how come I only get a six-foot fence? But he can have up to eight feet. Makes no sense. And don't tell me he was grandfathered in, you guys told me about that, about the bar. Their drainage is in my backyard. So my stuff is sinking. I get water in my basement from the bar. And you told me it's okay because they're grandfathered in, so I have to deal with it. This is what I was asking for, this is all I was asking for. And you told me I need a $325 variance to make a little adjustment to my fence so I can enjoy my property that I pay hell of taxes on. I'm not asking for a lot. I want what is owed to me, my privacy. I pay for it, just like everybody else in this damn town. They pay for their privacy and they get it. They have their privacy fences. Just because they don't have Big Erbs in their backyard, they get their privacy. I don't. And I don't think it's fair.
Barrett, do you wanna elaborate on the six-foot fence?
Yeah.
You know, I feel that that's a suffered issue and under item B, we could probably talk about that. What we're focusing on right now is the nuisance abatement, whether you'd like to have staff move forward to enter the property, remove the nuisance, and then assess it to the property.
So what really outside of the burn piles that are just shown there is still a nuisance on that property, I agree?
Nothing, just the burn pile.
I have a wagon with rocks in it that I wanna outline for, to get some barrier between that fence and the other yard. So hopefully I don't get too much damn water in my yard. So there's some rocks in our wagon. I have a grill next to my garage that's covered. I don't know. Help me out here.
Okay. Cause I, I, I actually communicated with one of the other members here. And that individual went out and looked at your property, I went out and looked at your property. I know there's substantial improvement. Is there a reason that these people can't burn those items in their backyard?
Not at all, unless the fire chief has an issue with it.
Yep, I don't want the sheriff at my door and me getting a ticket for doing it. That's why it has not been done. It's all good in that fire pit, but I don't wanna deal with the sheriff at my door.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do you want us to have Barrett explain what items are still of concern?
Yeah, that's a...
And then the council can make a decision on those items on how to proceed with the nuisance items. If the, if the burn pile is an issue, if there's a burn ban, I know there was one, I don't know if it's still in place right now.
It hasn't been rescinded yet that I'm aware of, so...
Yeah, and so if that's the case, then obviously she can't burn out there. But there are other items, then let's address those items now, otherwise it's just back and forth.
Right. So Barrett, address the other items, not the burn pile. What else are we dealing with?
I feel that everything was addressed. This was new. I, like I stated earlier, the property owner was great, complied, and everything got put indoors.
So is this an issue or not? Doesn't tell me like it is.
No, and this was brought up by a neighbor or the city who started it?
No idea, nobody will tell me. Because I would love to know and talk to the person so we can work something out. I'm always assuming it's Big Erbs. I don't know if it's Kelly, I don't know if it's Kelly's staff. I don't want to have that relationship with him, that I'm always blaming him for something. But that's where, that's the only people I can see in my backyard. And it's frustrating.
But everything else has been handled, right? That we talked about last time around, right?
Correct.
So we tabled it and we're here now.
Yep.
We gotta table.
Yes, and the council asked to get tabled so Barrett could meet with them. It sounds like that meeting took place. The issues have been resolved for the most part and now it's a council decision on this burn pile. Again, there's a burn ban in place, she can't burn, but the council can decide, you know, once that burn ban is lifted, that this pile will get burned.
So I mean, I'll see the issue with that. I mean, once the burn ban's lifted, you know, just be careful that we don't get the flames too far and cause anything else. But otherwise, yeah, I don't think you have a problem with that unless you guys see something.
No issue.
I mean, so, I mean, that, that's it? That's the only thing we need to consider or something?
Yeah, you're just about to deny the request.
Thank you for cleaning it up. I mean, that's probably what this started all, I don't know who, what, but let's start it. Thanks for cleaning it up.
So I have a question. So do I have to go and get a $325 variance to just do a little section of my fence? As I showed a picture of it, that's all I want, is to have some barrier so I can enjoy my yard from people constantly watching everything. You know, it's, I've had people from the bar knocking on my front door, asking to take a picture in front of my house because he was fighting with his girlfriend and he didn't want his girlfriend to know that he was at the bar. He said he was helping a friend out in Horace. I have people in my backyard on bean days, but you know what? I don't call the cops, I don't complain. I make the best of it because I realize the location I'm at. But I just want a little privacy. I don't feel like I should have to pay $325 for a variance, then come back here and hash it out and argue back and forth with anybody about if I should be able to get that little section and what's allowed, what's not allowed, all this. Plus the price of lumber, as you can say, it's expensive. And 325 on top of that and me taking my time away from my family, my job, and everything to come in here and go through all this? I just don't think it's right. I'm not asking for a lot. All I'm asking is for a little privacy, for a privacy fence.
For that question though, I mean, I'm gonna have to refer to Barrett. I don't know what is involved with that.
He told me I have to plant trees, which are gonna uproot my fence.
Okay.
Did you wanna move on to item B?
Is that where we're gonna discuss this part then?
Yes.
That's what we're making sure. So on A, you guys, let's, all right, let's get, take care of A first.
Yeah.
Is it okay if she burns? And look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So when we get the thing lifted, go ahead and take care of that. All right, move on to B.
Okay, so item B, as you recall, at our last city council meeting on April 5th, I was directed to meet with the property owner to discuss the complaints of adverse impacts from neighboring properties. I had called the property owner last week. We discussed various options. Some of those options were that she could install landscaping as a screen. She could apply for a variance for a fence or zoning ordinance currently limits fence heights to six feet. So if she were to go beyond six feet, she would need to file a variance application for that process and that, that's a public hearing process. Does have a fee involved. And another option that I don't think was ever discussed between myself and the property owner or at our previous meeting, she could certainly construct an accessory building that would block the view of that area as well so that she could operate her home occupation business and store all the items inside. So I kinda left it up to her, how she wanted to move forward. In terms of the neighboring property, it's kind of already grandfathered in. We can't really take any action at this point to ask that property owner to do anything. It doesn't sound like she's comfortable approaching that property owner and making a request for screening. And the only way we could move forward with having the abutting property owner put in some sort of mitigation to those impacts or to be, if he were to come in for a new building permit application, then all of our zoning ordinance requirements would apply, which would include paving the parking lot, installing a landscape buffer between the properties, landscape units. So I left it up to the property owner to get back to me to tell me how she wanted to move forward. And I was just looking for a comment from the city council today, if you had any comments on our discussion or any additional information or topics of discussion you wanted to bring up.
What is the fence height for commercial?
For commercial, it's eight feet. And for residential, it's six.
And this fence is on the property line?
Right on the property line. So if you wanna get technical, I could just flip it and put it, say it's him who's commercial right behind me and raise it up two more feet. Just saying, it's commercial back there, it's residential on my side. Okay, we'll just call it his fence then, but I'll build it for him.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Seriously. Sorry, but it's pretty simple. And I'm not asking to raise my whole fence. I don't want that. I don't want that. I like my fence just fine at six. It's, I just want a little...
Just a little piece, and I think you had a picture somewhere there showing like that little section of whoever's house that was.
Well, he can put Big Erbs signs on the back of it, I don't care.
Right, and I mean...
And call, write it off on taxes.
There is a level of, you know, best judgment with the codes? I don't know, I mean, this is technically on a commercial property?
I would agree. In fact, I looked to the comprehensive plan. It states that one of our goals as our community is to enhance aesthetics, that's using landscaping. So that was kinda one of the reasons why I brought up landscaping. It tends to be cheaper in cost. And it would fulfill the goal of the comp plan in improving the aesthetics of the property. So I just kinda left that on the table. Obviously, it's up to the property owner to decide if they want that or not.
I went out looking for landscaping, Barrett. Went to Lowe's, went to Menards, went to Home Depot. I went to Cheyenne out here. Nothing is available right now. But what is available is three feet and it's like fifty bucks, okay? So that's, it can go twelve feet high, so what? And I get a twelve-foot-high shrub, bush, whatever, in ten years? And then what, you're gonna say it's too tall? Cause it's over six feet? I don't know, I'm just saying. Then I gotta figure out how wide it can go and how many I can put back there. And then honestly, if I wanted to be a snot, I could do my whole damn fence. But I don't wanna be that person.
We're gonna stop the tone right here, number one.
Okay.
So one of the things I was gonna ask, so...
Go ahead, Sarah.
I was just gonna say, how tall would you want that fence in the backyard then if you had your druthers right now?
Honestly, I won't even be greedy. I'd go anywhere from two to three. I'm, I'm wanting three.
We're being up, butting up against a, you know, commercial building area, right? And there's extraordinary circumstances there because it is raised up with the gravel and all that stuff. I don't see why she couldn't put that back fence.
Right, and we do have a formal process in place, the variance process. Basically, that's the criteria you look at to see if there's something unique about the property where someone is trying to comply with the zoning ordinance, but they're not able to. So, and of course, each one of those situations has a different context. And our zoning ordinance states that it needs public review. So she could certainly submit a variance application anytime and we can bring that through the public hearing process to evaluate her proposal and verify if that's what you agree with.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Russell.
You can't, you can't build a higher fence with a variance.
Thank you.
You, you can't, it doesn't meet the definition of variance.
Okay. Well, yeah, cause it's the hardship clause?
No, no, no.
Let's change a couple here and go.
It doesn't meet the definition of variance.
Variance, okay.
You can't do anything, hardship or not, like that. Let me go a step further. The city council is the only body that can allow that fence to go to eight feet. Planning and zoning can't. Because it's not an issue that can, you can use a variance for.
Okay, then we don't have another mechanism either?
We have no other mechanism of doing it. City council is the only one who can make that kind of a decision.
So either we can make this type of a decision or if we can't, is there something that can be formed with a rebate or a tax credit or something like that?
Maybe I need direction, maybe I need direction from this council. But I was looking at Section 17, Point 11, Point 3. It states that the use of variances can be used for dimensional standards. It basically says for dimensional standards of structures and buildings, a fence technically is a structure. So I know that the definition and the variance section don't really align, but under the variance section, it does state that you do have the ability to entertain those types of proposals if it is a, you know, a request to exceed a setback or a height. Uh, be, if it is a, uh, you know, a request to, uh, exceed a setback or a height limitation on either a building or a structure. So I, I guess I would look to the planning commission for further direction on the interpretation of that language. But under my understanding, it, it states that, uh, you do have the ability to do that.
So what I'm asking, what are you saying there, Russ? That, I mean, is there any point for them going, what you just said, doing a variance and going through you guys? Cause there's no mechanism, right?
As far, as far as I'm concerned, that was not, that's not the point of the variance.
I know.
And that's why we had the definition changed.
Right.
Because it was, there was ambiguity in it.
Yep.
That, the very definition of it was for setbacks, uh, those kind of issues in dealing with a lot. It wasn't for dealing with issues of a fence.
And I mean, I, I have no heartburn letting them put up two more feet on the fence. Like I said, there's extraordinary circumstances here where they have that it's raised up behind them and I can understand the privacy thing. We got two feet there. That'll help.
Oh, some, yeah.
I know, probably won't eliminate everything, but it will solve some of this where you're not gonna have that. Um, I mean, that's where I don't have a problem with that. If they replace that wood with an extra two feet, you know, whatever you're gonna do to bring it up a couple of feet, I don't have a problem with that. I have no heartburn at all.
We need to make this as stupid, simple as possible. An effort's been made and they cleaned it up and they're having issues with some privacy. Bar obviously isn't willing to have conversations or vice versa. It doesn't matter to me. But we're spending a lot of time here on, I'm sorry, but offense, guys. Let the woman put up her fence.
Well, if it's eight foot on commercial property.
It's fine.
It's on commercial property technically, whether it's the commercial property owner that wants to privatize their stuff or the person not wanting to look at their stuff, what difference does it make?
It doesn't.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so.
I mean.
I, I would like to address that comment. Uh, I would like to remind the council that with these decisions, you are setting a precedent. Uh, you may find different applications under different circumstances and different contexts. And they may, may point back to this decision that, uh, they didn't have to go through the variance process either, so, uh, I.
We're not changing the ordinance, Barrett.
Yeah.
We're not changing the ordinance.
It's on the property. It's on the commercial property.
And this is on a case-by-case basis. I don't disagree with you that a precedent could be set. Oh, yes, somebody could. And you know what? I'm sure someone will. I will deal with it at that time.
That's what I mean. It'll be on a case-by-case basis. Again, extraordinary circumstances here that are, are unique around town. So that's why I'm saying I, I have no problem with that.
I agree with the council. They've done enough time. We've spent on this. Can't you just stop and let?
I agree. That's what I mean. Let's make a motion and somebody, let's go.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion. Naomi, there's a second. Okay, so this is to let them build a eight-foot fence in the back, so it's just so we know what the motion is here.
Make me proud, burn, burn your pile.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Alright, let's move along here.
Do I take my pictures back or do you?
Oh, no, absolutely. Sorry.
Yeah, you might want to flip through.
They're beautiful pictures.
What effort is it that?
Alright, Barrett, let's move on to ten here. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
You're started.
Alright, for item number ten, staff received a conditional use permit application that complies with the appropriate development application type as permitted by the city council resolution on November eighteenth, twenty twenty for the request to allow for an emergency use sixty-five-foot Roan twenty-five G tower for the purpose of attaching a sixteen-hundred-watt wind turbine on the property located at sixty-five oh seven, seventy-sixth Avenue South. If you have a location map to show up there. Uh, the applicant proposes to locate the tower on the northeast of the existing residential structure on the property and support the tower with guy wires, uh, as shown if, if you have a site plan there. Uh, electric wires will run from the wind turbine on the tower to the basement of the residence where they'll be connected to batteries. Uh, the applicant proposes to only have the tower temporarily raised during power outages that exceed forty-eight hours in duration. And then after the power outage has ended, uh, the applicant will lower the tower within twenty-four hours. Um, in addition, it's anticipated that the tower will need to be raised once every six months for not more than twenty-four hours for maintenance purposes. Uh, the tower is raised by hand crank and will lay on the ground when not in use. To lower the tower, the applicant stated that only the western guy wire will need to be detached. The applicant has agreed that with the exception of the western guy wire, that guy wires will remain attached to the tower in the ground at all times. Uh, regarding the site, uh, the nine-point-two-four acre property parcel is owned suburban residential, uh, surrounded by trees that the applicant states are approximately eighty feet tall. Uh, there's a six-foot-high chain link fence that runs around the whole perimeter of the property. Uh, the tower is proposed to be sighted where the setbacks from all property lines are equal to or greater than a hundred and twenty feet. Uh, in addition, the applicant has agreed that the tower will not be located within seventy feet from any structure. Um, and then, I don't know if you want to review the, uh, conditional use permit criteria, but our findings showed that all the requirements were met. Uh, and then we proposed twelve conditions, uh, for the, the permit. Uh, the CUP requirements were provided to the applicant and reviewed at the last planning commission meeting and he's agreed to all of the terms. Uh, staff received comment from Donald Brennan at seventy-five oh five, sixty-sixth Street South. Uh, he stated that he is in favor of the project. Uh, staff evaluated the application, finds that the proposal's in line with the city of Horace twenty forty-five comp plan and therefore staff recommends approval of the proposed conditional use permit as outlined in the staff report.
So just to add some more background for the new folks, um, we went through this, uh, back in, Russ helped me earlier. Was it October it kind of started? November?
September, October.
Yeah. So we've gone through this cycle once. Um, we had to make some changes to, to a couple of the conditions here, additions, I think we did. I don't know if we changed them or added. I don't remember. Um, cause we didn't let it go through back last fall. Uh, but now there's some changes that were made on here that were what we were wanting to make as far as the conditions. And, uh, Russ has agreed to do that, so that's why we're here.
I'd like to modify one of the conditions. It has to do with, uh, they specified grounding of the tower. And I'd like to change their specification to the manufacturer's specification for grounding because what the, what the city is recommending is totally inadequate for lightning strikes.
Okay.
And what I'm, the.
This was a Roan tower, right?
This is a Roan tower.
Okay.
And this, this has, this has, uh, specifications for grounding and I have the equipment to do it, which are about a thousand times better than what the city's recommending.
Okay. Well, I'll have to talk to our city about some of that then, cause I thought that initially, I thought that's how it was gonna be grounded. I didn't look into the details, so.
No, they're, they're just suggesting a, a six-gauge wire and, uh, I think a ten-foot grounding.
Ten-foot, five-eighth inch ground rod. And that was actually my recommendation, because at the time we had no grounding shown on this. So if this is the manufacturer's recommendations and it exceeds or supersedes my requirement, by all means, go for it.
Okay, because, yeah, that's all I want because.
You have to have that thing grounded.
It has, it just has to be grounded. That's all the point I was trying to make. So if they're recommending a couple of ground rods and larger sized wire, by all means, please follow.
On that type of tire, or tiger, and that type of, uh, antenna system, well, tower system, I guess, uh, yeah, it's three, each leg.
Each, each leg and, and not only that, the grounding rods are also buried.
Yep. Foot down?
Six inches minimum, six inches.
Six inches minimum? Okay, perfect. That works for me.
That's the, that's the only thing I, I would like changed on the conditions is just the grounding.
And that's fine. I'm, I'm all right with that. The other thing too with this is that Russ is gonna set it up, uh, what are you gonna say, a couple of days to give it a test run?
Basically, it's, it's, it's.
Or a week? I don't remember what you said.
No, it's just, it's, it's gonna be shorter than a couple of days. I have to set it up to get the cables tensioned.
Right. Yep. No, I know. And that's what I mean. So he's gonna do that and once it's tested out, he's gonna set it down until we have, we'll call it a power emergency, however you want to put it. But I mean, so to a point where you get, been without power for forty-eight hours, he'll put that tower up and use the wind generator to recharge the batteries, so. And it'll be used up until power is restored and he'll put it down again and that, that's it, just there for an emergency.
I don't want it up permanently. It's a risk to my tower, correct?
So. So any questions for Russ on this one? As I said, we've gone through this exercise once already and we've added some conditions on here. We've all agreed to it. So unless you guys have got some questions beyond this here, we'll look for a motion to accept. Now, I suppose they had to do a public hearing, don't they? Lucas, you gotta help, help me out here a little bit.
It's a public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna open this up for a public hearing if anybody's got any comments or questions they want to talk about. Going once, going twice. Alright, I will close the public hearing. And now I'll ask if anybody's got any questions. Otherwise, we're gonna accept a motion.
As long as Russ has us over if there's, if you don't have power.
Yeah, well, we all know where, where that tower is gonna be, so.
There are other requirements for showing up unless there's no power.
That's on that other list, right?
That's another list.
Okay. So the motion is though, that I want to make sure everybody understands, we accept, uh, you know, that you're accepting this along with the addition of the grounding, the modified grounding.
Yep.
Okay. So who wants to make the motion? Okay, Naomi makes a motion. I get a second.
I'll second that.
Sarah does a second. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Brenton, you got eleven.
Okay, I'm gonna just touch base really quick on this, uh, but Jim and Lucas were gonna, uh, joint effort on this one. Wall Avenue and annexation update. Uh, I was asked, uh, by some of the council members, I know Sarah brought it up to me, asking if we can update about Wall Avenue and annexation process, where it's at and just kind of recap to folks what we're going through, why, you know, what's, what's going on. Uh, it's just more of an update for council. Uh, but like I said, Jim could touch base on where we're at of the engineering side of Wall Avenue. Uh, some of the challenges we're going through with that. And then Lucas will give a quick run-through of where we're at with the annexation and remind everybody what we're going through on that part, so.
So plan preparation was underway. Plan preparation has slowed down just due to the nature of the, um, pending mediation amongst the annexation. So it wasn't, it was, obviously wasn't gonna get constructed this year, so we've slowed down on that. We continue on doing some permitting and some other things, but as far as full-fledged plan preparation, it's, it's been slowed down greatly. So that's where we're at with, with that. Nothing really earth-shattering to report, but that's what that's it.
You guys have done core sample, just for the newer members.
We've done geotechnical samples along west of the bridge, trying to get an idea what the soils are like out there, which aren't good. And we're working to mitigate those. And we're also working on lane widths and some, uh, pedestrian facilities. As one of the residents you alluded to today, it's a very difficult corridor without pedestrian facilities, so. We're done.
Got any questions for Jim?
Yeah, I, I asked where we're at with that because I've had residents that live west on Wall that have said, this is crap. When can we fix the road? What can we do? And I'm, I'm trying to get a perspective of what's holding that up. So this road is not eligible to be fixed at this time because of the potential annexation discussion that's going on?
Correct.
Yep. The, the main challenge is the portion from the bridge or to Cheyenne to just before we have Lost River and River's Edge is entirely township. As township road, we've approached the township and passed of having different options, different agreements. Uh, Lucas, myself and Cory, we're all present at that township board meeting to present the options of what could be done. Uh, the township declined all those options of where we could do like a joint venture or a joint project with them. Uh, and they requested the city pursue the annexation. They felt that that was the route that should be done. Um, and then, I don't know if I missed anything else on that. What we presented to them, we presented a variety of options.
So the township, correct, yes. And their response is for the city just to take it over. That was the simplest solution for them.
And then the city moved forward with.